Good evening and welcome to the May 12th regular Select Board meeting. If you'd please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first order of business is to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the question.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Motion will be in order to approve the April 28th regular Select Board meeting minutes.
So I move. So again.
Any discussion? Uh, motion, or, all those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, open public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak under open public comment?
I'm on the agenda right now.
Right. Okay. Okay.
This is the mosquito district meeting, isn't it?
The mosquito district meeting, yeah. I hope you brought your mask, because at the end, we're all gonna get sprayed as we go out the front door.
I just want to remind everybody that the Memorial Day parade this year is on Sunday, not on Monday, and it's at noon. And it's going to be the ceremony in the park after, and our year is gonna be serving hot dogs and chips and cookies for everybody, so. Just to kind of prolong the ceremony a little.
And on May 28th, from 3:00 to 5:00 o'clock, at the high school, we're going to, um, open the story walk that our high school outdoor class did. We, the town, the library and school, all did this project together. Um, and then we, during the day, the elementary school and the high school both read a book by the same author, Kate Messner. She's coming to speak with them. And then in the evening, well, from 3:00 to 5:00, we'll have refreshments and we have, um, books to give away. So it'll be over at the gym, and you can walk the little path and see the story and see the story walk. The outdoor class, um, is the, uh, with Ms. McCune is the one that, um, learned how to grade the path and make everything, so, um, they were very concerned with the community here. If you were going with a buggy, that you could go easily, just as you were walking. So it should be nice, and about every six months, something like that, the story will change. So, um, that is on the 28th. Alright, the bells went around, everyone signed the orders.
Yes.
Uh, you have the letter to property valuation and review board requesting a 30-day extension to lodge the grant list. Questions?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Alright, um, parking ordinance review based on residence complaint, so we have residents here. You want to speak to that first?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so, the public parking spaces, uh, typically placed.
Can you just state your name for the record, please?
My name is Henry George. I live on 15 Bluff Street. Um, parking situation in places like cul-de-sacs, tight streets, stuff like that, uh, can get kind of cramped. Um, and generally, this isn't a problem when it's just, say, residents and occasional guests who are parking on the street. However, when some residents, proctor, have, say, commercial vehicles, they're contracting businesses and whatnot, and populate the street and make choke points or turn parts of it into one-way roads, uh, it gets kind of dodgy to, uh, to have parking around there. Uh, things like garbage trucks or perhaps emergency vehicles, if such a thing were to happen, could be impeded by that. So, ordinance that I pulled from Burlington, more or less, is about restricting commercial vehicles being on the streets from, say, contracting businesses, dump trailers, box trailers, just work trucks that are there for business purposes, owned, owned by the, owned by people who are in Proctor but are stored on public through ways.
Okay. So, just for clarity, you have a neighbor that obviously has a construction business that doesn't park his vehicles on his property, but parks them in the right of way?
Yes.
The entire street.
Yeah, along the entire street. It's been a pressing issue for a few months now.
Years.
Years, yeah. And, uh, it's to the point where during, even during, like, winter ordinances, when there's complete moratorium on bull parking, you just leave it there, and talk to him several times, he doesn't seem to be very interested in that.
You could, you could speak, you don't have to whisper to it. It also caused property damage because of the nature of the street we live on. It's a man-made bluff, so when his streets are parked along the side, all of the snow that's usually plowed up the streets, um, ends up going up to our house and caused damage to our property. Um, and talking to him about this did not change anything.
Okay.
Um, he also had a dumpster that he had purchased last summer, parked on our street that rodents were going in and out of, and when we tried to address that with him, he said that it was debris and not trash, and so therefore there could not be any rodents. But we experienced a really high volume of infestation in our house that is not normal to our house last winter, and he did not take our concern seriously either.
Okay. Um, have you, did you contact Rutland County Sheriff? Have they come?
Oh, no, we did not, uh, we didn't contact the sheriff. We mostly stuck to talking to the town.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, he hasn't done anything to, like, criminally intimidate us or anything like that. He asked them to try to reason with them, and he's.
We've offered to help him move the property, because he had multiple reasons for saying why he couldn't move it. He didn't pick us up on that. Um, but it's causing damage, and it's really difficult for us to navigate the street, and it's turned almost the entire street on a regular basis into a one-lane street, which then makes it difficult for anyone to get in and out.
Was the street plowed during inclement weather?
It was plowed, just not to the full extent that it needed to be. So we have a little rounded cul-de-sac at the end of the street where our house is.
Yeah.
And so all the snow that would have gone over the edge ended up having to be pushed up there, so they couldn't fully plow that area in the winter. Um, in the summer, it's mostly just, it goes down to one lane. We watch our, um, the person who picks up all our trash, which we struggle to leave and enter the entire street because of all of his vehicles. These are, like, large construction vehicles, large trailers.
So how many vehicles are we talking about?
Uh, it can range anywhere from four to eight.
As of today, he has a panformer, a ITHI machinery trailer, uh, one of those flatbed trailers, and he has a box trailer. That is typically what he has out there running down the street. Panform is attached to a, I want to say, a super duty.
So are they parked when you pull into Bluff Street, or are they parked where he lives as you go up?
It's not near his house at all.
It's not by the garage in the house?
Nope.
Okay.
It's right on the bend, kind of.
Okay.
He's parked along next to our house, um, instead of anywhere near his own property.
Yeah.
Okay.
So he had, oh, sorry, my head.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so he has received letters, I've sent him several letters, telling him the violations, letting him know the circumstances. He has moved them from time to time, once I've sent those letters, but then from talking with you, he returns them there. He was looking for a spot to move them. He does have space on his property. Um, I have had no other complaints. Um, the public works guys didn't complain about plowing, so I did tell him that he was in violation, though, and that he had to keep them up on his property and not down below. So, um, the last I talked to him, he was moving it elsewhere, so if he hasn't done that yet, or if it's making it worse by putting more stuff, because when I went up there, he had one trailer, I believe, there, on the, on the bend.
Okay. Um, I mean, we definitely read over this stuff. We're not gonna be able to take action on that, obviously, this evening. We can reach out to Rutland County Sheriff, because even under our current ordinance, you're not supposed to be parked on the travel lane of a road. You're not supposed to impede traffic and all those kinds of things due to safety. Um, with respect to rodents and like that with the dumpster, you can always reach out to the town manager, to reach out to the health manager, and, um, or the town health officer, and we, that's a different avenue that you can travel down, so you have two different paths to travel through. Um, but we will reach out to Rutland County Sheriff tomorrow morning and let them know that it, this is happening, and have them assess the situation for a few days for us, and reach out to him, and see if we can't come to some solution that is agreeable to everyone. Okay? Is that appease you at all, or?
It sounds like something, yes.
Okay. I mean, it's the first time it's been brought to us, so.
I understand.
Yeah. Okay. Albert, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, just to make sure, are there any parking permitted signs up there? I haven't been on that street in decades, but.
There is no parking permitted signs.
Okay, good.
Didn't there used to be signs on one side up there that said you couldn't park on one side?
I don't think Bluff has ever got one.
I thought on one side. When you used to go up to Doc's house, you couldn't park, like, on one side of the road.
But I didn't know if there was parking permitted. You know, then it's a different set of rules.
I think we have parking permitted.
If there's no parking permitted, then there can be no parked vehicles on the travel portion. So I would, just like they said, contact the sheriff's department and just have them.
The thing with the sheriff is, if he's off the street somehow, like, up, you know, that corner where it's, like, you can pull off the road, if he's parked there and we have no signs that say no parking, he can't ticket him. So that is something else that we need to look at, if we want to put no parking signs along this, that stretch.
So what we'll do between now and the next time we meet is, everyone will take a drive-by and go up and look, and do it more this time of the evening as opposed to during the day when he's out working, so that everyone has a clear, clearer picture of what that looks like, also with respect to, um, and then we do have the option of including that for, like, say, no parking, um, or, you know, like, no parking on the street, like, there are some streets in town that have that, or no parking, like, on, you know, the left-hand side or something like that. Um, I know that street's narrow, um, so that, that's something we can look at, too, and include that street into the ordinance. Okay?
So, a good question. The vehicles you described, you said you had maybe four?
At the moment, it can sometimes vary. We have pictures of when it's at its worst.
Is he, is he the only one driving them, or are people common parking and taking the vehicles and leaving?
So sometimes his, I assume, part of his employees is riding his vehicle.
Supposing they'll use?
They park their trucks there, they'll leave, but I, I don't know. They don't often take the vehicles that are parked on that, at that point, no.
Sometimes.
But sometimes they do. Sometimes they hang them and leave for the day, and then they, they respond to the day. Stuff like that.
At the moment, it's at its minimum. For the last few days, it's been at its minimum of just, like, three or four things.
Three trailers, one of which is attached to a truck. Yeah, that's what we listed. Uh, here's the, four license plates worth of ours.
Yeah, I only asked because I didn't know if all vehicles were leaving and coming back.
There's stuff there, driving vehicles that picked up and go.
Most of the time, it's sitting there for storage the entirety of the year, and if we didn't say anything during winter, it would sit all winter as well.
So it's year-round for us.
Until we started talking about it last winter.
He's not being cooperative. He is not.
He's just kind of being a little bit petty with it.
Alright, we'll reach out to him. We'll have the town manager reach out to him also. And then, um, the Select Board members will take a drive-by for the next meeting, and then we'll look and see about, you know, like I said, we could put no parking signs. We'll discuss and see if that is a viable option. But then that impacts everybody on that street, too, about parking on the street, so, that's just, you know, something to think about. But we'll put on the agenda for the next meeting, and the next meeting will be on Tuesday because of Memorial Day.
We're mostly thinking about just limitations to construction vehicles, because people just having their guests over, there's not a lot of parking on the street, we know that.
Yeah.
But just using your construction equipment for your business as your parking lot for everything on top of your employee parking, that's what we're bothered with.
Sure.
Because it's not like it's just gonna be there for a week or temporarily, it's there all the time unless we say something.
Right.
So it's not like a situation where we wanted to limit parking for everything, for everyone, just have ordinances similar to, like, Burlington, where it's, like, if it's a construction vehicle and it's not parked directly outside your own home, it can't be there longer than 24 hours if you're not working on a residence, because it's next to our residence all the time.
Right.
So something along those lines in regards to construction equipment and vehicles and trailers, not necessarily people just having guests over, that's not the same.
Okay. Um, and we'll look about, we'll review and look at that. To change an ordinance, there's certainly a pretty extended time period from changing it to warning it and all of that, so you're probably looking at 45 days, 60 days, so.
It's not bad.
Okay.
We just wanted to talk about it more, because it's something that other towns implement with construction vehicles, so it might be helpful.
Yeah.
Because we don't want it to be an all-ban for all street parking, just construction equipment being parked outside of residence you're not working on.
Okay. Alright, we will, we will definitely do a deeper dive into that, and like I said, we'll have it on the, um, next agenda if you want to come back.
Sure.
Alright? Anything else? Anybody else have any other questions, Albert?
Did you mention reviewing the ordinance? Zoning ordinance? Ability of adding, you know, the.
Yeah, that's what I said, review the ordinance they can.
Okay, yeah, and then there's a number of edits that we'll do at the same time.
Yeah, we can do that, yes. So coming back with those suggestions to that next meeting and discussing that, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, the next order of business is the resolution request that addresses condemning the tax on due process and affirming the constitutional rights of all people of Proctor. Yes, thank you. Would you like me to read the resolution? If you'd like to, Karen.
Mary should stand up.
Whereas the United States Constitution guarantees due process, equal protection, and fundamental rights to all persons regardless of citizenship, immigration status, race, religion, or political belief, and whereas we, oh, let me back up here. This is a brainchild of Peter Franzoli, who is a veteran that lives in Rutland, Vermont. Uh, he has sent this resolution to all municipalities in Vermont, asking them to adopt it. That said, I'll continue on. Whereas history has shown that when the rights of any group are violated, it opens the door for similar abuse to be carried out against others, first against immigrants, then against dissenters, eventually against anyone who does not conform to the views of those in power. And whereas the silence of public officials in the face of such abuses amounts to complicity and failure to act, now will only embolden those who seek to dismantle the law, the rule of law, and divide our communities through fear. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Proctor unequivocally condemn all violations of due process and weaponization of government powers against any individuals. Be it further resolved that the Town of Proctor affirms its unwavering commitment to protecting the constitutional rights of all people in our town regardless of citizenship, status, national origin, political belief, or any other identity. Be it further resolved that the Board of Selectmen pledges to oppose any policy or action, local, state, or federal, that targets individuals based on who they are, where they came from, or what they believe. And to defend Proctor as a community rooted in justice, accountability, and the equal dignity of all. It is further resolved that the town managers shall review all relevant town policies, practices, and protocols to ensure that the Town of Proctor actively upholds and protects the due process rights of all persons within its jurisdiction. And be it finally resolved that the town managers shall formally notify in writing appropriate persons to the Vermont State Police and Rutland County Sheriff's Department of this resolution affirmation, affirming our community to the constitutional rights, equal justice, and the safety and dignity of every member of the community. I feel it's really important for us to adopt this resolution. It is a time when we are barely hanging on to our democracy. Our federal legislative, legislative branch is basically impotent, and it's time for we, the people, to say and demand that all members of all branches of our government adhere to the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States is the rule of the law, the law of the land, and no one is above the law. So I would ask you to please accept this resolution. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would speak?
Does that all conclude illegal immigrants who migrate to the.
No, we're over here.
Any can host.
Yes, in fact, it does. Any person, any person, it's right in the Constitution.
Okay. Let's do something. Mr. Thor, who are you asking a question to?
Mrs. Al. I'm asking a question.
Okay.
My understanding is, if they come to this country, we think that they do not fit the definition of the person that they claim it is. I'm not a lawyer by any means, nor is probably anybody else in this room, maybe, I don't know everybody except Danny, that I have faith in our federal government. I have faith in our Attorney General of the United States, that they're gonna do the correct things for the people of this country. And if this gets, uh, voted in, I would propose to add in the language that, just gotta make sure I get it in here. In the, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Proctor unequivocally condemn all violations of due process that is allowed by both the state and federal government. We don't, we don't have, we can't just say, we're gonna forget about the Constitution, as Carol thinks some people in our country are. You know, we have to abide by the laws of this country. And my feeling is, if, if you're an accepted immigrant into this country, going through the process of naturalization and any other conditions that are allowed by our federal government to be considered of a person who has the right to stay here, yes, they have all the rights. But somebody who just came across the border, as I watched on the news many times, people coming through the fences of all parts of the state, including Canada, and to think we're just gonna make changes and unequivocally go out and say, we're above the, we're above the law. And if we can't at least put that statement in that resolution, then we're saying we are above the law.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak?
Sure.
Okay.
The language is not good, anybody above the law. Due process involves explicitly, explicitly, the law. It, you're, it, it's not about being a resident or a citizen, it's about being a person, a human, and humans have rights.
Thank you.
To a degree, for the most part, I hope.
For due process.
At this purpose. I disagree that people shouldn't have due process.
We should have due process for citizens and those who are allowed into the country legally by the law.
How do you know when you're Russian, buddy, if you're legal or not?
Okay.
I talked to the Russians, the people who are resting.
This is what we're gonna do, kids. We're gonna go one at a time, we're gonna talk to me, and we're not gonna do personal attacks. So if you want to speak to the resolution, that you don't like something in the resolution, you want to change the resolution, you support the resolution, more than happy to do that, but I don't want cross against people. So anyone else like to speak to the resolution? Kathy?
Hi. Excuse me. So my understanding is that every human being that comes here is offered due process. That means, perhaps they're here illegally, and we will find that out. If they're not, we'll find that out as well. That's what due process is. So we can't remove due process. There are some people right now in our government who believe they can make a decision about whether someone is here legally or not without bringing them before a judge. And that is, I believe, a travesty of everything we hold dear based on when we had a revolution, because we had people who came in and took our own colonies because they believed they had the right to do that. That's a, that is a dictatorship, that is a king. So I don't want that.
Well said.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak?
This is not, or at least it shouldn't be, a hard choice. The Constitution is quite clear on this. You can't snatch people off the streets without due process, or you shouldn't be able to. If the government can do this to any person, it can do it to all of us. None of us are safe. None of us are safe. I don't think we want to go down that path again.
Okay. Anyone else? Did someone just come in? I know, I'm just going out. Is there anyone out here before I go to the board that would like to speak? No? Okay. Albert?
Yes, I was gonna, because you mentioned every person, you know, during the COVID epidemic, you know, Act 44, uh, there, I believe, there was 4,400,000 immigrants were deported. Why wasn't there the outrage at that time that 4.4 million immigrants crossed the border without a hearing were deported? Where was the outrage at that time?
I'm not sure. I, I, all I can say to you is, I believe there was due process during that point of time. This is a new experience we're having right now. That may have happened because they got there before a judge. I don't know the facts.
They identified before a judge.
But I'm telling you that you may not know the facts either. What I know right now is that the facts are that people are being deported without any appearance before a judge, and judges are upset. And, and as Steve said, this could happen to you, this could happen to me. We could suddenly have ICE come to our door and say, you are not supposed to be here, and take us. That is the SS. That, you, you don't want that in this country. That's frightening. You might think because they're the wrong color or they're the wrong language, they don't speak what you speak. That would happen here in Proctor. We had, all of us, we're, we're immigrants ourselves. Where's the compassion? These people may be here illegally, but they may be here because they're refugees. You don't know till you find out. You have to ask them.
Yeah. Okay.
And then, what law is driving, you know, the current activity? You know, is it, is it the expedited removal, the bill that was signed by, the law that was signed by President Clinton in 1996? You know, because that's been in place since 1996, and that's been used by every president from that time forward, you know, to, uh, do that expedited deportation without seeing the judge.
Legal deportation.
And, well, yes, and.
It's a legal proceeding. I'm telling you right now, when you take people, excuse me one second, but when you take people and you put them on an airplane as fast as you can, because you don't want them to go before a judge, that is an entirely different experience than what we have experienced through the course of our history, except when we incarcerated the Chinese and Japanese and Filipinos, because they all looked like they were our enemies, which was also a disgrace for our country. So we've had our disgraceful times, and we've learned from that, and we should learn from it again.
But that's what I'm trying to do, is learn. And the one thing that I don't understand is that expedited removals been in place since 1996, and that is de-exportation without seeing a judge. That was the quick, in, in one year, there was 197,000 immigrants that were deported without ever seeing a deportation judge.
Look, go ahead.
Um, so if I may, when our government is saying they're looking for ways to bypass hideous corpus, we need to be afraid. Our government.
Our government is telling us this. We're trying to enact some kind of war powers like we're being attacked to take away people's rights. Doesn't that frighten you? I mean, we're talking about this moment in time. I'm very afraid. I'm afraid for my children, I'm afraid for my friends, people I know, college students. It's frightening. And, you know, the least our town can do is say, okay, it is the rule of law. I mean, if we're saying we're just going to support what our government does, they're going to try to bypass this.
And when we say government, we're talking all branches of government, right? We're just not...
Well, the judiciary seems to be supporting the rights of citizens, but then their rulings are being overlooked. So, yes, all branches of government. The executive isn't the only power that they're trying to take it right here. Okay.
I'd like to add that it's not just illegal immigrants that are being taken out of the country. There are students who have green cards and visas and who are entitled to be here who are being snatched off the streets as well without getting any due process unless they see Judge Sessions up in Vermont, and he has released a couple of them.
Yes. Okay. Can I just ask you, Carol, just about a couple of things that are on here, just for clarity and information? Number one, has every town that it's gone to, have they adopted it in the form that it's been presented to them? I have no idea. I know that Longford adopted it last Monday night. Last Monday night, Peter Franzoni was in by Vermont presenting it, and it was accepted. And I, I mean, I can check with him and see. Okay, I was just curious. And then, for the last three, or I guess the last two clauses, or where it says be further resolved, be further resolved, the second and third one of that, what is the expectation of that? What is the expectation of this board? For this board? Because it says the Board of Selectmen pledges to oppose any policy or action, action local, state, or federal that targets individuals. Is the expectation that this board will be speaking for the community? Is the expectation that this board will be writing letters? No, I wouldn't expect you to be writing letters, but I would expect if there was any action against any of the residents in this town in regards to this resolution, that you would take a stand appropriately. Okay.
Consistent.
And consistent to the resolution. Okay. I just, like, do you know what the expectations are?
So, when it's proposed, and if I would say someone were to be perhaps illicitly targeted by Longford or something like that, this left word might make a statement or actions or efforts to contact a judge under the hat.
That, that's my question. Is that, is that an expectation?
At least make inquiries, if I understand correctly.
Okay. That is how I read. I just, there's a lot of people here, so I'd like just, I'd like things to be clarified. Mr. Holt?
I just want to thank the Select Board and Chairman Lisa Meiser for handling this in a civil manner, hearing all input from all sides, and I think it's valuable to hear opposing viewpoints to a resolution that's being proposed. I support it, however.
Yeah. Anything, any other questions from the board?
Well, I served this country, and my grandfather and grandmother came to Proctor because he was offered a job at the Vermont Arbor Company as a carver. So he came with a job, and I don't, so he, he came, they came in legally, and my mother's parents did the same, and I don't, I don't see how we can handle 400,000 or 500,000 cases individually on this. I, I don't think we can do this. We've seen a lot of rapists, drug dealers, what have you, that came into this country because we opened our borders. That's a lot different than years ago when most of the people that came to the United States came through Ellis Island in the 1800s and early 1900s. And this should have been stopped way, way back in, say, in 1996, but nobody said a word. And I, I have a lot of questions and a lot of feelings, but if you go to another country, no matter where in the world, you've got to prove that you were a citizen. You aren't going to get out of the United States probably, and you're certainly not going to get back in if you're not a citizen anymore.
And you proved that through due process, did you not?
How are you going to do 400,000, 500,000 people?
So should we just snatch 500,000 people off the street and ship them out?
Send them overseas.
Well, you, we'll be, it'll be long before all of us are, aren't alive anymore if they try to go that, so.
Kathy?
Mr. Boucher, do you realize that, I don't know about your ancestors, but when my ancestors came here, there were no immigration laws. People got here, if they were healthy enough, if they passed Ellis, they were allowed in, and many of them were indigent, many of them had no job, but they were allowed in. These laws are new, the laws we've got, and I agree, we need to follow the law, but you can't look at your ancestors and say, they came here and they were good people, because many of the people that came here back then were not good people necessarily. There was a lot of anger against the Irish and the Italians I happen to know. Excuse me just a minute. And so those people had a lot of discrimination that they experienced, but they were here legally because there were no immigration restrictions back then. So you need to understand, we have immigration restrictions, people are not listening to them, but we still need the law to be followed. If you don't follow the law, you have chaos, and you're going to have people who are going to be cruelly treated, and it's on you and me that that happens then.
Yeah, but people, people didn't get off the boats at Ellis Island, and they scattered everything. They got names, addresses, the whole, yes.
It's no different. You go to the border in Texas, and they take your name, and they try to follow you. It's no different. It's just...
Okay, that's just, just my opinion.
Okay. So we have a couple options. There, the board can take action on the resolution, the board can table the resolution, the, someone offered an amendment, Mr. Towor, you could ask for that and review it. What is the pleasure of the board?
I would make a motion that we pull off making a decision at this meeting.
Okay. Albert?
Well, I was going to ask to table it to the next meeting, just so.
Okay. So if you table it to the next meeting, generally, things are tabled because you need information. Is there additional information this board seeks, and if there is, what is that information?
I'll just go to the chairman.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
A number of times I've heard it mentioned that they are violating the law. Who are they, and what laws are they violating?
You won't need this before.
Well, anybody, anybody that may know, because I don't know, I just want to learn and find out, you know, and get some fact finding.
So people who want a better life, just as my forebears wanted a better life.
No, on the government side.
On the government side, it is the Justice Department that is allowing ICE, which is the immigration, and I forget the other two names for a service.
Border Patrol.
To, and at the border authority, CPN, those people are allowed to now come without even a uniform on them and take people.
Do they have to have an arrest warrant?
No.
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 They do not.
Not here. They just take them. And they're gone, and you don't know where they are, and you have to find your loved ones.
And that is fact, I mean, because, you know, if I turn on the TV, I can't believe half of what I see or hear, but...
You'll need to read what the lawyers are saying, because these are all legal proceedings now that are coming before judges. So there's facts have to be presented to the lawyer, to the judges. And the judges are saying, stop it, to the Justice Department, because the Justice Department is not following the law. Now, this can go all the way up to Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court can say, okay, we don't care. I don't know. But right now, we're following the law, and the law is saying, the justice, the judges are saying, you cannot do this. This is illegal, what you're doing, to the Justice Department, to the people who work for the Justice Department. And the, what is it, what are they called, the border, the, our border protection, border agents.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second to table it?
Second.
Okay. Is it the desire of the board to have Mr. Towor's amendment to review? Would you like him to submit that to you?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
First, you would vote on the amendment to the motion, and then vote on the main motion if the amendment succeeds.
Right, so we're not voting, they're voting to table the, table the resolutions to the next meeting. I'm asking them if they would like what he proposed to review. My expectation is if you're tabling something, you need time to review it and to assess with additional information. So I'm asking if they would like to have that clause that he suggested to review, or if that, that's not a consideration.
I have a couple of questions. Of course, this is, it's very confusing times right now, and everybody can agree that on each side, there's, you know, you want to protect everybody at the same time. This is just my opinion. It seems the confusion, at least on my part, when I look at this for the Selectmen, the board, to take action or support, of course, we would always support the right thing. Protect anybody we need to for the right reasons. I think the, it's got to have some clarity. I don't know, from what I'm hearing, what we're expected to do if we had to do anything. I don't also know if this is a preventative measure because we expect visitors of some kind that are going to be going to each house? Do we know this? Do we know, and ICE, border agents, they must have information of some kind before they target, I would assume, anybody just walking down the street? I can't imagine they're just going to pull up and snatch people off the street because they don't like the colored shirt they're wearing.
This is what's happening. People are being snatched off the street.
Well, I understand, but see, I...
That are not given due process.
That was my question is, and I can't agree or disagree as to what's happening behind the scene. They must have information on something if they've targeted somebody, they know the location of these people, if they're illegal, if they're criminals, or for whatever reason. They've, they've targeted them, they've set up, and they, they grabbed them, and they've brought them away, they've secured them, or whatever they're doing. And in the process of doing that, are they trying to figure out who they are and what they're doing? I can't imagine, hold on one second, please, I, I understand that that's part of the confusion here.
So...
So I, I think my, my question was as to what's expected from the board. I can't imagine anybody would want, they call them sanctuary cities, or, my understanding is they're protected, they're hidden on purpose. I can't imagine we'd be, anybody be requested to do something like that if there was somebody illegal in this, in Proctor that we're not going to report, or if that's what we're expected to do. I, I, that's my question.
I, I think what they're asking of the board via the resolution, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong, is to stand as one and support due process, not to, not to, I don't know, dissect the executive judicial border agents or all of that. And whatever we all collectively watch on TV, you take from that based on your personal experience, your heritage, if you come from immigrants, if you have family that escaped war. So there are those things. But I think the essence of, as I'm taking in of, of what we're being asked of, if you, if you pass the resolution, is that the board and the town of Proctor collectively is supporting the Constitution and due process. Yes, exactly.
Bottom line.
Thank you, Lisa.
Don't read anything more into it than that.
Right, that's all it is.
Take it at face value, and that's it.
That's it, yeah.
Could I respond to, to one of Mr. Towor's remarks?
Yeah.
You talked about what, they must have something on these people. In fact, what they had on this woman was that she had stood up and defended the Palestinians against the Jewish Air Force, which was bombing them to smithereens. So that was what led them to her. They decided that she was persona non grata because she had supported someone who is an enemy theoretically of Benjamin Netanyahu.
But she was a citizen.
No, she was not a citizen, but she was here legally.
Whether they're citizens, or they're not citizens, or they're under a green card or a certain time, there is, they can be revoked.
Of course they can.
But the right to free speech is granted to people with green cards and people who are here legally.
Right, not, I understand, and I'm not arguing, you know, I'm not arguing whether what their reasoning is if somebody stands up on a podium and they're, whether it's what propaganda they're, they're talking about, if it's terrorism, if they're supporting something, Hamas, if it's...
It's, if they have the thing on them, if they have the, if they have anything on the speaker, that can get, will be like to get discussed, that can be measured and, and quantified and ruled on in, in due process in a court. You don't take someone, arrest them without a warrant, without doing anything, without saying, okay, we arrested this person, this is why, this is what our evidence is, this is our proof is. It could be a kangaroo court, and that's another problem, but the idea that everyone should have the ability to go through that process, that all the evidence should be presented, that, yeah, if this person is, I don't know, I don't know, a terrorist or whatever, or they're a rapist, or they're any, they stole a candy bar, that you can say that, because if you have that, then you have that, and if you don't, then you don't.
And I agree. And you guys had mentioned, there was a couple of you had mentioned that you're scared now in the town of Proctor. Well, that's concerning.
We all go other places, do you guys?
I want to mention one other thing, too, just to think about, all of you as board, as members here, that if you travel to another country, I think you expect that if you were to be snatched up in that country, there just as a tourist, just as a nice person visiting, but suddenly you have someone who comes in and grabs you and takes you, you would consider that a really terrible thing to happen to you, right? That would be, you might want to go to that country anymore, because that's not how a country should behave. A country should behave in a way that shows that they revere the rule of law, that they believe... A country should behave in a way that shows that they revere the rule of law, that they believe in it. And so, we need to stand up for ourselves and act that way ourselves. We need to be the model for the rest of the world. We don't wanna be the kind of people that say, fine, I don't wanna go to a country that's suddenly gonna snatch me because I'm there visiting, how do I know they won't, if they see that I do that in my country?
And it's already happened to some tourists, too, in Hawaii, those British, you know, the Jews.
I think we're going off the deep end, and on many little rabbit holes. The question before the board is very simple, to each and every one of you. Do you believe in due process, and as a board, are you willing to vote unanimously for it? As a small, little town of Proctor, as a gesture, very simple.
Okay, well, so-
I just have, yeah, just have a second. To, it's to your point, and I agree with you, so how, Jim, how do you clarify your concern over what he just said?
I think it just strengthens the position that the tab has. What I'm saying is, as long as it's legal, you know, if you're gonna try to unequivocally say, this is what we're going to do, if it's under the law, then, fine. But to just go out there and milly-milly to say, we're going to do this, well, who's gonna define what due process is? Who's gonna define what an individual is? You know, it, it's just an endless death cycle to go through. But if it's defined as saying, as allowed by state and federal government, then it's perfectly okay what we're doing.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to table this to the next meeting, which would be the 27th? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. Motion passes by majority. So, it will be on the agenda for Tuesday, May 27th, for action.
Lisa, can I just, for people with narrow, before the next meeting?
Sure.
I'd suggest you read Article One, Section Nine of the US Constitution. And then, look at our Vermont Constitution, because the word citizen does not appear anywhere in our Vermont Constitution, the word people and persons does, not citizen. So, look what the rights our Vermont Constitution bestows on us. And, and remember, the word people and persons is used for all those rights, not citizen. And then Article One, Section Nine of the US Constitution. Thank you, Eddie. The US, our, our Constitution, whether it was intended or not by the founders of our state, grants far more expansive rights under its constitution by the use of the terms.
Okay, thank you all very much, you're welcome to stay. Excuse me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, a motion would be in order to move into the Board of Water Commissioners at 654.
So, move, second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously.
So, I gave you two sheets, one of the delinquents, the one that's a bigger font, shows the April shut-offs, and then the May shut-offs. Um, and then the second one is the next group of letters that were sent out, giving notice to everybody that they are delinquent, and if not paid by the end of May, they will be shut off, unless they have an agreement or make payment. So, once those letters were sent out off, off the April shut-offs, most of those came in, they all paid. We've had two that have been shut off, um, and actually, three that were shut off and remain shut off. The Nine Park Street was paid after they were shut off.
So, did they locate the shut-off, though?
They've located all the shut-offs, they've shut them off. Uh, those that say shut-off on the top from April 7th are shut-off.
Okay, so 6 Gibb Street is still shut-off?
Yes.
Okay. And 40 High Street is vacant, isn't it?
Yes.
And 43 Taylor Hill is shut-off, still? Okay, when houses are vacant, do we call the mortgage company to let them know that we have shut them off, just so we don't have?
Um, no, we dealt with, they're still, the family's still in that house.
Oh, okay.
Nobody's living there, but they're dealing with foreclosing, getting rid of the house. So, she, I told her they were delinquent, she said she can't pay, but she said, shut it off.
So, they, they know it's shut-off, then, okay, that's my question, okay?
And then the May 6th ones, on all of them that were going to be shut off, they all came in and paid, except 21 North. We cannot find that shut-off still.
This is May 8th?
May 6th.
May 6th, the ones at the bottom, of the same page.
Five, six.
The one, the ones in the larger font.
Follow along, Jay, would you?
I got, oh, there's-
You can change the date, I don't care.
So, what are we doing if we can't find the shut-off?
Um, they're keep looking for the shut-off, they're, they keep digging, trying to-
Yeah, but, I mean, it's possible the shut-off is in the sidewalk.
Right, right, they've tried to track it and everything. There is somebody that, from the town, from years past, thinks they know maybe where that shut-off is, so they're gonna try to see if they can let them know.
Okay, so, how, how soon do we anticipate that's going to be?
I, I have no idea, it's not, it's not like a, I mean, they, they've got so much going on right now to go and dig up the sidewalk. And the thing is, they were paying, and then they just stopped, um, so-
And the other one that's looking for the shut-off?
They came in and did an agreement.
Okay.
Today. 12 Green Square.
And paid.
Paid on the account, yes.
All right, any questions for that?
Yeah, the second page.
We're not to that, we're just going to the-
Okay, I'm just getting ahead of you.
Yeah, okay. The 5-1, is that where you're at, 5-1 shut-off?
5-1 shut-off letters.
Okay, that's where we're at.
Yep. So, I've been trying to update these as I, like I said, you send the letters out, and then they're constantly daily changing, from somebody coming in, somebody-
Sure.
So, um, there are a couple on here that this week have said that they're coming in to, to pay on them. Um, one property was sold, the one on-
Powers Square?
Uh, no, um, Gorham Bridge and South Street, up at top, the Kraus. They were both, um, sold, those properties were, and for some unknown reason, which this should never happen, I don't know, the attorney should figure this out. They should have, that should have been part of the closing cost, to pay off the arrears, and they weren't. So, they are sending a check for both of those properties.
Okay.
To bring them current. Um, Irving Oil is also sending in a payment on 19 West. I don't know of any others that, they have till the end of this month, so.
Um, the, the outer district one, that's pretty helping them out.
Uh, where are you?
A fifth one from the bottom, does a letter go to them? This one.
Oh, oh, that one, yes, a letter went to them.
Do we know where the shut-off is for that?
I believe they may know where that one is, just 'cause we've done other work down there.
That, I mean, that's like a huge number, why is that one so far? Why, why wasn't that in the first?
I do not know, unless, it's, it's not even in the property listings. Like, when you go down through the property listings.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So, what I'll do is, I mean, even the next meeting, they still have a couple days to pay if they want, but I'll still update this, just so you can get an idea of other, some of these that are no pays, have paid.
Yeah.
And in the interim, while the, while this month's going, these guys will be out looking for shut-offs, just so that if they don't pay, they have the shut-offs there.
And so, on the fourth room from the bottom, how do they, how do you come up with that number, based on the balance?
They just, well, they come in and they paid what they had, like, in interest in the last payment that they didn't pay, so they pay it. So, they're all, they're all over the map, like, she came in and paid that amount, so it was like, say, a port, the sewer, whichever the last one was, and then the interest from the delinquent.
So, she's not paying on the delinquency, she's paying on the current?
No, she's paying on the delinquency.
Oh, it's just such a weird number.
It is.
Yeah.
Okay, I just thought when they signed, signed a payment, that, like, based on if I owe X, based what pa, what's past due, with what's current, we divide that, and we tell them. Do we tell them what they have to pay, or they are telling us?
They tell us what they can pay, put down, I deduct that from the balance, and then we do that over the 12-month period.
Oh, okay.
And they know that no matter what they put on, it's always just gonna pay the delinquent, it's never going towards, you know, and they also have to pay the current as well.
Yeah, it's like these people, some people are never gonna be current. I, I just don't see how they can catch up. So, okay, I know, yeah, it's kinda like the cat chasing the tail, I think.
Oh, I know.
Questions? Jay, you have questions?
Well, yeah, you can say, you can tell.
You look relaxed.
Yeah, I'm just still trying to figure out, I know you're chasing this, it seems like you're, you're always chasing it around here. There's, there's gotta be, and I can't figure out what it is, an easier way. I mean, you sent out a letter on 5-1, as of 5-8, we've got no payment. And then you'll get a payment the next day, and then the following day, you'll get a payment, and-
Well, if they pay, like, if they pay in May, they're not gonna pay again in May, pretty much guarantee on that.
Right, and then you're gonna just turn around and, and you gotta-
And then I have to check at the end of the month, if they haven't paid, then we do the shut-off.
So, all these people have an agreement, though?
No, none of them, well, some who paid.
Well, one has.
Yeah, no, these just got the pink notice saying-
So, if they haven't made a payment, they don't have an agreement?
Correct.
Okay, and one guy paid them for. Okay, so when they come in, they have the letter, they make a payment, they sign the agreement?
Yep, sometimes they'll just come in and pay on the account, and they don't ask to do an agreement, which messes me up completely.
So, they don't, they come in and pay, they don't sign an agreement, June 1 rolls around, we have to go through all this again, because they haven't signed an agreement? Or they receive the letter, can we shut them off?
Well-
June 1?
If they've made a payment.
No, no, they've come in-
And they made a payment, then they're, yeah, then they, I would send them a second letter. It's only when they've made an agreement and broken it, that we can shut it off. Or if they didn't come in and pay anything at all, then I can shut it off, after the 30 days.
Okay, well, I think we have to be really diligent, and I know it's difficult, 'cause you're up here, that before they take payment, they have to sign an agreement, 'cause it's just making your work-
Oh, I know.
Like, next week, next month, you're gonna do the same thing if they didn't sign an agreement.
I know, I know, and it's not happening as much now as it did before.
Okay, so they have copies of the agreement downstairs?
Yeah, I give them all copies.
Okay.
And I give her the sheet, so she can mark this stuff.
And I'm sure it's, it's tough to keep track of people, too, when they come in to pay, like, do you need an agreement?
Right, some don't come in, they'll just drop it off.
Yeah, yeah, gotcha. Is there any way where we send a letter, whether they sign an agreement or not, we can be absolved of that? We've sent them the letter, that the following month, if they don't, so, they come in in May, they make a payment, they don't sign an agreement, they don't come in June, July 1, can we shut them off, or do we have to send them the letter and ask them for an agreement?
I've been sending a second letter, just to say, you, you paid on your account.
'Cause that's how we get to October, and people haven't been shut off, because for three months, you're doing the same thing for somebody.
But I think it's written that way, that if you pay, if you come in and pay, or-
It's written in our agreement or in statute?
In our notice.
Oh, maybe we should look about changing that.
Yeah, something is, yeah.
Simplify it more now, too.
No, but I'm just thinking, like, what, there has to be some obligation on their behalf.
Right.
I feel like everything falls on our shoulders, to make sure they have, I mean, and come July, we're all gonna get property note, tax, all that, that's my responsibility. If I lose it, I need to call CIO, you get a duplicate, or whatever. It, it seems very, um-
Hand-holding?
Very childlike, I think, I guess, that, that's how I would say it, that every month, I have to remind you that, you know, you haven't paid your bill.
Right, oh, I know.
So, I don't know, it's, it's frustrating, I think it's frustrating sitting here, so I don't even, can't even imagine what it is dealing with that all the time, I would not be, I would not do well.
No, I would just, you know, that-
Have certain expectations.
Or just, you know, they're rough.
Well, the thing is, and I explained to them, I said, you know, if you don't, if you come in and put $200 down, you've gotta pay your regular, and, 'cause otherwise, it's, your, that interest in those back papers are just gonna keep adding up, and you're never getting yourself out.
Well, the regular amount has a due date.
300 dollars.
Yeah, and if you don't pay the, the current amount with the due date, then that, then there's just more interest, because then that goes delinquent, that increases the delinquent amount, and so, the delinquent amount increases, the percentage against that is, you're paying more
Right.
in a fee, I guess, is-
Well, I think going through the exercises, saying you're delinquent, and the letter-
Well, these people have been delinquent more than one year, you don't get this amount.
They come in and pay a certain amount, and say a week later, the current amount is due. And they don't pay it, that right there-
Default some from the, if they have an agreement.
They should shut them off right there, there shouldn't be another third day.
Yeah, but we haven't reached that, because the bills that they got were from last Jul, last time. So, we don't get them again until July, so these, these delinquent ones are the last payments that were due, March, April.
But they're delinquent the end of the month.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so that's what you said.
But I'm saying, there's no current one due yet.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's what, yeah, I, I get you, I get you, got you, all right.
It's confusing, and it's just-
Anything else we wanna beat around about this? Okay.
At least some people are covering up, Jay, I don't know. You're gonna celebrate when somebody comes in and pays their waters, too.
Um, okay, um, anything else underwater?
Uh, no.
Okay, a motion would be in order to move out of the Board of Water and into the Board of Sewer Commissioners.
So, move.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
So, we did have an incident this weekend, due to the storm, with the pump out here in the park. Um, it overflowed, so we did, um, some sewage went into the Outer Creek. Um, our operator reported it to the state, so, everything's okay now. It was, I mean, there was nothing we could do about it, um, not any human error, it was weather, um, it was to the max. Um, my concern is it's supposed to rain again this weekend, the lagoons are pretty much at their max right now with water, and we can't release any of that, because we released a quota that the state gives us, which is very frustrating, because it seems that if it did overflow, it'd be a bigger mess and a bigger problem for us, but the state regulates how many gallons you can release.
So, we, we didn't get fined, though, right?
No.
Okay.
So, they released, so far, he's released 700,000 gallons.
That's what they said?
At the, at the lagoons.
How much?
700,000 gallons.
Oh.
700,000 into Outer Creek? 700,000?
Yeah, from the lagoons, that, that's not the overspill from here that went in, that's the regular, normal. What we nor, well, normally, we do like 500, 600,000.
Oh, process.
Yes, process.
I was like-
But that's why he can't, he's at the max, so he can't release anymore, to lower those lagoons.
So, are you asking that we pump them, or?
We can't, there's nothing we can do.
But before, didn't, didn't you have a truck come or something? Haven't we done that before?
I don't think we've ever come to one.
I don't think so.
Oh, I thought we did.
I don't think so.
Okay, so what happens when it rains this weekend?
We hope it doesn't.
Okay. So, how, what's the timeframe before we can release again?
I don't know how often he does it. I'm sure it's not till next week, but- I don't know how often he does it. I'm sure it's not till next week, but might be at the end of the week. But he was here all weekend because we had something wrong with the pump, um, in the pump station and stuff, so he was. Working on that all weekend.
Chasing himself.
Okay.
Yeah, and putting up signs for the flooding in the Gorham Bridge, so.
Okay, well, I think if there's something you can do, I mean, that you should, you know, i- i- if there is an option, then.
Right, I don't think there is, and the state.
For that much.
Puts your hand, so.
Two, three days.
Yeah.
All right, anything else?
Uh, no, sludge, uh, removal bid should be in by Wednesday. Thursday, I think Thursday's the fifteenth.
And then you're, they're gonna review them and give them to us at the Tuesday meeting to look at?
Um, he didn't say if they would or not, but I should have, I'll have them by then, so I can.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm hoping they come in.
There's what, three of them or four?
Um, the last I knew there was at least four, there could've been more, but, cause one wasn't visiting, one was just getting data, so. But, yeah. Yep.
But it won't be here?
No, they're doing it in their office.
Okay.
So that's the Thursday meeting you were talking about, uh?
No, that's a different meeting. That's through the original planning commission.
All right, uh, motion would be in order to leave the Board of Sewer Commissioners.
Come on.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, um, Sheriff's Report is in your pocket. Town Manager's Report, any questions on the Sheriff's Report?
Yes, I have a, a, a general question on the Sheriff's Department. The, and this is kinda broad, so Proctor used to have a town constable, a town sheriff.
Constable.
Have you ever looked into going back that direction because I was looking at the cost?
We have.
Oh, it's more than.
So the constable to, um, they have to go, cause like Don Russell was constable. And then he was a constable that didn't carry a gun, because. He had to go through the same training, if I recall correctly, as. As the sheriff or anyone like that, so.
Well, I, right.
But years ago, we had a, we had a police officer on duty.
Yes.
We always did, yes, um, but we looked into it and we looked even joining with Pittsburgh and West Rottlin. We were looking, and it just cost us even more, plus we'd be in the same situation, Pittsburgh would control it. If they needed help, it would go to Pittsburgh first and then we'd get the, the fallback, so.
You know what the huge cost was, I think, when they came, or this was my takeaway, was the car. And outfitting the car with all the. Gadgets.
Yeah, and all the, well, it's, in, equipment and the insurance and the training. You'd have to send somebody up for, what is it, sixteen weeks or something?
Well, get somebody that's already been and has been certified and has all that stuff.
Yeah, but they're, they're, they're working.
Yeah, so the problem is you don't think there's enough coverage in town is, I mean, I see the state police a lot on our side.
Yeah, and I was, I was only curious because I was just looking at the, I think it was fifteen days worth of what the cost was. And I thought.
But we're, we'd be paying more than that even, because we'd be paying health insurance, we'd be paying liability insurance.
Have to have more than one person because they're gonna have to have vacation, they're gonna, you're gonna have to have somebody when they're at the academy. Every now and then.
I don't know if you can go back and find the, but, uh, the town manager from Pittsburgh came with. Um, maybe the sheriff and a slot board member, a couple meeting, two or three meetings. And they had kind of broken down and done all the research for the, for all of that, so it was kind of like. Sort of, I feel like a little bit like mosquito district, yeah, there's a lot of upfront costs to buy into and then. It seemed like there were a lot of continuing, um.
Well, plus if a car was ever in an accident, and it'd be like, you know, astronomical.
Well, and I know, it's, it's, uh, it seems like a lot and, and I'm just, you know, the town.
I, I mean, we pay it, we do pay a lot, and I know people say, you know, I never see the sheriff and I was, you know, so it's like, I don't know, was that good or bad? That they think your neighborhood doesn't need to see the sheriff?
No, and I don't know, it's not like a crime ridden.
Yeah.
You know.
But I do notice like, um, like now at Marcel's, they, um, there's usually a state police car there on the weekends.
Yeah, or at the church.
Yeah, or at the church, or even, uh, on Loop Street down there a lot, so. I do think that we got, I, I personally think we get pretty good coverage from them and. Um, there is an upside that they have to go through Proctor to get back to Pittsburgh, it seems like you have a lot more, um. State police presence because of that, so, you know, I, I don't know, I mean, I, I know that it's been looked at a few times. I think there was a committee at one time, maybe that Kevin Blondie and people were on.
Yeah, this is looked at twice in the last.
Doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I realize it'd have to be more than one person and there, maybe even two cars, you know.
I think it was about double.
We were gonna have to buy a car with the Pittsburgh one if I remember correctly. And then there was, uh, the quality of the report here. And the one that we would get from Pittsburgh was pretty vague. So, uh.
Yeah, I just, I didn't know, I was just looking at the cost.
It was.
Yeah, it's, it's in a.
Way, way more and. And then.
You can't put a price on safety. Can't put a price on safety.
No, 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 and they caught, the report was nothing like this. It had very little information.
He said it's a danger.
Yeah, because they didn't wanna change and give us more details. We're gonna have to buy a car.
I don't think he'd do that.
And then you got uniforms, you got two, three sets of uniforms.
Right, okay, I didn't wanna get us outside.
No, no, no.
I, I think it's good to revisit it, but sadly, cost for that just don't seem to decrease on.
Yeah, and this works well with West Rottlin because they swap. Hours.
Okay, Town Manager's Report.
All right, I contacted Tree Service to remove a tree on Chatterton Park, I questioned it, cause it's in our right of way. And it's, um, a dead tree and it's a hazard of people going by, so they said that they would try to get it removed. I contacted the fence company to look at the pool, I contacted them last year. Um, he wasn't able to get there then, he said he was gonna go to get, take a look, give me a quote, but he can't repair it until probably July at least, cause he's so busy. I reminded him that if he went up last year when I called him, that we would've had it done already, so.
Who is it, is it someone we, the fence company we have to go with?
It's one we've used before in the past. Yeah, but, um, it's hard to find fence people. Um, found someone at Castleton University to do the recertifications, um, and initial certifications for our lifeguards. Um, Gannon is coming, returning, so I'm thrilled to pieces about that. So his brother Connor's gonna do the, um, run the pool until July fourth when he's home, and then Gannon will take over again. And right now we have three lifeguards that wanna be lifeguards, two, um, one's good still, she doesn't need to recertify. Um, Gannon and, um.
Connor.
Connor are getting certi- recertified themselves of where they're at, and then the other two I reached out to today to tell them that they could get recertified June first. Um, so I haven't heard back from either one of them. Yeah, one I communicated with, but.
So, okay, so i- is Connor getting recertified before June first?
Um, you mean before June nineteenth or whatever, before the pool opens?
Well.
Oh, before, yeah, he's not gonna be part of that.
He's not?
No, cause he's, he's not here, so we're.
No, Connor, Connor's here, not Gannon, Connor.
I know, Gannon said Connor was somewhere else, that he was gonna get certified there.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'll have to reach out to these other two.
So I'm glad that, she was great at Castleton to try to get us in, she's pushing and pushing to try, she's like doing a slew of.
So, so we'll have four lifeguards come this summer?
Yep.
That's where we're at, okay.
And well, if can't, if, uh, Connor stays, well, five, if you include Gannon.
Well, Gannon, Connor, Chase and Rose are four.
Right, but the other one that was here last year, the young girl.
From Rottlin?
Um, is it Rottlin or West Rottlin, she's coming back.
Okay, and is she already certified?
She was certified last year, so she's still good.
Okay, can I have her?
Why don't I have anything from her yet, it was, Gannon reached out to her, so.
Okay, well, all right, okay, thank you.
Um, great efforts for Greenup Day, uh, the elementary and high schools cleaned up a lot. Um, the kids cleaned up the pool too, parks, beaver pond and the roadsides, so they did quite a bit. Um, eighty-six people showed up for Dump Day, uh, thank you guys for standing down there in the drizzle and rain.
Remember you promised donuts last?
I said, I said next year.
Next year.
In the fall, you'll get them in the fall. Um, yeah, so, um, they filled all three dumpsters, I had to reach out to Casella though, um. Last week because they didn't come and pick the dumpsters up, and so I said I have an issue with that because we have.
Another filled with water.
Right, we left the dump gate open for you, that's not a good thing, cause people complain. And also I said we had heavy rains, so now all three dumpsters are gonna weigh a lot more because of that water. So I'm gonna ask them to credit us something, cause they're, he said, well, I have a ticket for you to drop them and not pick them up, and I said. No, I said I talked to you and I talked to, not to him, but someone else and emailed them even, and said I want it picked up Wednesday morning. So they picked them up this Monday, so they probably weigh even more because.
Yeah, sure. With all that water in there, yeah.
So, um, let's see. Um, the elementary school five K color run was Saturday, it had been rescheduled from the third, they had a pretty good turnout. Actually stopped raining right before they ran.
Right.
Um, it was good, it, I thought it was a really good turnout though, except when you threw the color dust out, it was so windy, just moved on.
Like paste?
Right, but, but it was good, and the sheriff showed up, so it was covered, so, um. We are denied class two paving, um, so Gorham Bridge obviously was denied because it's not class two. To qualify for class two, you have to put an application in, it takes, they don't make decisions till December.
Yeah.
So they told me to go ahead and apply for any class two we did have, which was Main Street, part of North Street, and, um. Uh, what was the other one? And so I did, and they sent me a letter back saying it's denied. So it's like, well, thank you for asking us to apply and then denying us, that was really great, so. The only thing it does is that because we were denied, it moves us off a slot for next year, so. So now I, I'm scrambling to find paving money, so, and I'm sending the bids out for, um, Gorham Bridge, and I'm gonna ask them to do it in, um. Like sections and increments, so that if we can't afford the whole thing, what's it like from this stage to this stage?
It is, look at that, there's huge chunks on the side of it.
There is, it's really bad, right up on that knoll going down.
But we can save money, we, we don't mow down there this year, we can use that gas money.
Uh, I sent the water report to the printers today to get printed up, so we'll get that out, it has to be out by July one, so we'll have plenty of time to get that out. Um, hoping Timber Harvest is gonna pick up this month, it's rained so much that they haven't been able to get back up there, so. Uh, and then the Trytown, Trytown Path meeting, um, we decided the other day that they're gonna revisit with Velco. On using the right of way, cause that was kind of taken out of the, um, one of the connections that we wanted. So they're gonna see if we can move the bike path up further and connect to their right of way, cause it would make it a lot easier and take it off the road a lot. So they're supposed to meet this week hopefully, and then we'll get back together, and then we're gonna have a final town meeting to follow. And we, they did do the amendment to the grant to extend it for the final, um, design work, so.
Okay.
And that's it.
And then Thursday meeting.
Yep. Six or six, she usually does six thirty, but for some reason I think it's six.
Thursday at six?
Yeah, and then the, the other one is nine to two thirty on Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah, so I'm hoping, I'm gonna try to do a dummy run on this and.
Are you gonna, so it's gonna be here, nine AM?
Yep.
Okay.
And bring your own lunch.
Yes, and he goes, are you getting lunch, and I go, no. They get an hour break.
So.
You? Yeah.
So Thursday, they're just looking at the Rottlin County, the county.
Strategic plan, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, um, Stephanie's gonna run that meeting.
Yep, I'm not gonna be here.
I am not going to be here either, so.
Oh, that's a different meeting.
That's the one with the Ro- yes, the fifteenth in the evening.
There's one here.
At six o'clock on Thursday.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I will be.
And that'll be with the planning commission, right? They'll be here too?
Yeah.
Planning commission member.
I've invited them.
Okay.
So six, I think I had five written down, but.
No, they usually do six, six thirty. Six is better than six thirty.
Open meeting thing in Rottlin.
Oh, how was it?
Oh, I listened down on it.
Yeah, it was, it was all right, but, you know, there were so many questions and trying to cover it, they weren't able to. Do all of it, but they supposedly gonna get us some.
Yeah.
They should've set the format, let us go through all the slideshow and then we'll take questions afterwards.
Right.
Start taking questions and it just. And they never got through half of the slides, so if they, they are supposed to send them around, Judy, maybe if we could have a copy of.
Okay.
You know, that would be nice, if we can just.
Whether they'll send them to us because we were.
Well, we're supposed to, anybody that was on the mailing list for the meeting is supposed to get a copy of.
A hard copy or electronic?
Uh, electronic is what they were gonna send around, you know, but it's nice just to have it, you know, in your file.
Yeah.
You know, if we get that, we can, uh, send it to you and.
Okay.
Or she'll get it, she's on the mailing list.
Yeah, I should get it.
It should be on their website if it was.
Yeah, it is, it is, it is on their website, and, uh, they said they were gonna send, you know, the electronic copy to everybody.
You can, you can just copy the link.
Yeah, I had two people from the, well, the Secretary of State and her assistant.
Okay.
So I got two questions if we can, before we close.
Yeah, are we in other new business?
I don't know yet.
Okay, let's, let's pretend like we are.
Uh, so we had the Vermont statutes online.
Yeah.
Ordinance that was handed out, right?
That was part of the group that's here.
Yeah, I understand, that's, uh, so are we supposed to be looking at editing or doing anything with this that?
Well, that's what she asked to take it under advisement, if you wanted to, um, you know, amend the, the ordinance right now to include something like that in it.
Are we talking about parking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought we were on the resolution.
Oh, I know, no.
Not that one, yeah, so that was, that mentions.
Yeah, so I think the goal for that is to read what they said, the Burlington one, right, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, I, I do think, you know, we should probably reach out to him if we would like to do that, and say, listen, you know.
I, I've written him, I've talked to him twice, I probably have written him at least two or three letters.
Okay.
Yes, I've been in constant contact.
This is Bluff Street, this is where Stratton's used to live on that little.
Yeah.
Dead end right there, and that's where there, there was issues with plowing or something one year.
They haven't had any issues with plowing this year.
Yeah, they may have had something, but, you know.
It's right on the, like, when you pull in there and you just start to, before there's any houses, there's like a little kinda side, and that's where he's been parking his stuff. And he keeps promising he's gonna move it, he's gonna move some to his property, move it somewhere else.
So what, and then of course it goes through. It had, uh, you know, solid waste on here and it had littering and all kinds of.
Well, cause I think they're talking, cause, um, apparently sometimes maybe he has a, a container or dumpster there probably to get rid of. Materials, so. Yeah, so I think it's read through it, highlight things that you think are, you know, pertaining to this, I mean.
And add it to our.
That's what we're gonna talk about at, at the, at the meeting, like, do you wanna, I mean, you could amend and include things, you could. Um, put up no parking signs on one side, I know that their request was only to have. I know that their request was only to have a deal with, um, construction based vehicles, um.
But if you put no parking, you're gonna, i- i- if you put no parking signs, it's gonna be, nobody's gonna park there.
Right, right, I understand that, I'm just saying, those are all the, those are the options I'm seeing to look through, so. Um, and then, yeah, read through it, highlight it, you know, questions or whatever, and that's what we'll discuss it on the next Tuesday meeting.
And I usually do reach out to the sheriffs whenever people complain because it's usually their, North Street, Kane Street. People parking on the street with, and those have signs, no parking on the street. And people still continue to park on the street.
Yeah, I'm gonna say temporary things going on, there's, you know, but not permanent parking.
No, these people park there all.
So my other question was the Franzone information. Um, this is gonna be discussed other than executive session, we don't need anything, no?
There's no executive session for it.
No?
No, it's, uh, so, I mean, I would read through it if there are things you don't. I mean, you can amend it and make it however you would like it. It's kind of like there was another resolution a couple of years ago that was kind of D E I.
Right.
Related and I loosely using that, I don't remember what the resolution was, but it kind of encompassed that. And, um, I know that, I was not on the board at the time, but I know the board, um, actually sent it to their lawyer, if I recall, and had it rewritten. You were on the board, Albert, when you did that, Bruce.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I'd like to see if this one mirrors like the one in Rutland or the one in Wallingford, you know?
If they just changed Rutland for Proctor.
Right, yeah, I would just like to see.
So maybe that's something you could just, could you just, I would just see like, yeah. Um, it was, uh, Pittsford or something too, so.
Yeah.
Maybe if we could get Rutland, Pittsford.
I think West Ru- did West Rutland?
Wallingford, didn't.
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
I think there's a lot of them that have.
And see, see if they have it, if they passed it, if they made any changes.
Right.
Maybe they could just email you what they approved and then you could send that out to us to look at.
And that's, oh, I'm sorry, no, I was just gonna ask, the, the amendment, or not the amendment, but the, uh.
Resolution?
Yeah. Are we gonna vote on the motion to say that we are in favor of due process? Or are we gonna also include in there per the requirements of the attached resolution, you know, because?
I think you would just move to agree to, that you would, you approve the resolution.
Okay.
So that's the question, you're taking the resolution home with you. If there are, if there is verbiage you'd like to change or take out, then to highlight that. And to, i- if it's substantive, maybe if you could send it to Judy so we could have it in our packets to look at rather than have a room full of people and have to digest changes at the same time. So, and then if Judy gets from Rutland, Pittsford, West Rutland to see if they have substantive changes. Um, and then, I don't know, if you wanna just reach out to Mr. Towor, I did not get all of his words just so we could just have whatever that syntax was, um, to look at also. But the essence of the resolution is that you're going, you're saying that you are going to uphold the constitution and, um, uphold or support due process, I mean.
Why can't that be the resolution?
Well, yeah, I guess, yeah.
You know, when you stated that in the simplest form, well, yeah, I, I'm for that, you know? That's easy to support because.
The, um, I think, and I don't wanna speak for the group, but.
Yeah.
I think they want it to say in some manner that you are doing that for all people. And I think that's why Andy suggested, you know, read Article One, Section Nine, look at the Vermont Constitution because there, I think that was a discrepancy if it's saying people, citizens, legal citizens, I mean, there are all these like little things, so.
Then you take you back where you may not agree with what's being, what was written on that and you oppose.
Or amend it.
Yeah.
The constitution, you're gonna have to.
Well, it's just, I think he was just giving that for some context because that's where it talks about due process.
Well, I guess, but I agree with Albert, the simple was what you said is fine.
Well, and, and that's something when, I'm sure everyone's going to be here on Tuesday.
Well, that's the other thing is, the audience is either heavy on one side and very, got some very strong opinions as to what's going on. And I don't think that's.
You may have, you may have a different flavor at the next meeting once this is broadcast, you, you might know.
Right, my only fear is you, you know, it's a powder keg and, and.
Sure.
And it turns into a big, loud nothing. Because people are heading down and everywhere with all kinds of concerns and.
Yeah.
Or if we have thirty people show up rather than.
Yeah.
Right, well, that was my fear too, is when we said that, when we said it's gonna be the next meeting. You may have thirty or fifty people in here and then the next thing you got is, you know, they're walking the sidewalk out there. That's where I don't want it.
Walking to your car, Jay.
No, I mean, I'm talking with signs and, you know.
Well, I don't know, I mean, I think when they discussed this at Rutland, it was pretty, um.
You don't wanna draw that kind of attention.
Well, that's, yeah, I think.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, that, that's what you're sent here for, to represent the people. That's what they put you here, to represent there. And so this is something that this collective group feels is very important at this point in time where we sat today. And so I think we, you have an ethical responsibility to listen to them. I think to allow people to speak, to allow people to be heard, and I think that's what we did tonight. And now you have a responsibility to take it back, to read through it kind of in your own space, quiet. Like, I need to, like, I have to read stuff, process, read it again, you know? Um, and then see, like, you know, that's why I ask questions about what is your expectation? You know, do you anticipate if someone comes and they, you know, are we then, are we the front line that is writing a letter about due process that, you know, is speaking, um, in that, so? Um, and it's true, so you have these thirty people, you know, there might be another thirty people that feel just as strongly the other way. They just didn't come this evening because they don't wanna.
Yeah.
Well, I'd also like.
They'll watch it on pay TV and they'll either.
Well, it makes, I, I know what you're saying.
So I like when you're, when you're looking at it, it's one thing for the select board to adopt just accepting due process, but if you look at it, it's putting, it's putting restrictions on me as town manager and kind of telling me what I need to do in my job.
Yes.
So that's what I want you all to look at because I, I report to you. And that's saying I need to contact the sheriff, the police, I need to check policy. That's beyond, that's beyond a resolution.
Clauses, and that's what, that's what I'm seeing, like, is that the expectation, you know? Because that, that is, that is a small group then telling the town, giving the town manager directions.
And who am I to judge?
How are they gonna do four hundred thousand people?
So, so.
Years and.
Yeah, so that, that's kind of the expectation, Albert.
I just wanna, on the record, that the only reason I launched the table is so we could digest all the information that was.
Yeah, I don't know.
They wanted a resolution, uh, a vote tonight, but there was a lot here to digest.
No, and that's what I'm seeing, if you teach us something, the expectation is that you're going to go home and do a little more research and learning.
So there's two, there's two here, which are we looking at and what do we?
Uh, the one Judy gave us.
The one for Proctor, the one that I just gave you tonight.
One of them says.
One's just like the letter kind of.
The one from Franzone or the?
The one, no, the other.
Whereas?
Yeah, the whereas one.
So that's the one we're gonna review?
Yeah, and then Judy's going to reach out to, to a couple other communities, see what they approved and send that and then, um, get the syntax from Mr. Towor and share that. But just share as informational for you to look at, not to reply back to or anything.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
And then I, you know, come, if you want it, if you come with a proposal that says something as simple as that, you know? You, you can do that, I mean, like I said, I don't remember what that other resolution was, but when we, when you rewrote it.
Yeah.
It was very different than what other people had, um.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Uh, approved because there were some concerns in there.
I think it was on inclusivity.
That was what it was, yeah. But there were, there were changes on that.
Right, because a lot of people felt we're inclusive anyway, why do we need to put it?
And there was something in there about a policy, creating a policy or something.
So they're gonna expect some resolve on the next meeting?
At the next meeting, we'll take some kind of action. You're either gonna approve it, you're not gonna approve it, or you're gonna lay it on the table which means that it could, you could lay it on the table and take it up at a future meeting, so. That's your, that's the pleasure of the board. But it'll, it'll be on the, what?
That's me.
Oh, it'll, it'll be, it'll be there for action, yeah. Okay? Alright, if there's nothing else, the motion will be in order at seven forty-two to adjourn.
So.
Second.
Uh, there's a favor?
Aye, aye.
Should pass it, see names.